King George County Planning Commission has now called the order. If you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for allowing us to gather in this place, dear Lord, keeping us safe from hair, harm, and danger, dear Lord. We ask that you guide our hearts and minds as we go about the county business, making the best decision for its citizens, dear Lord. We ask that you give everyone patience, give everyone the understanding that is needed as we go about this business. These are the blessings that we pray. Amen.
Next, we'll open the floor for public comment. If you have a public comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Linda Carter, and I work with Port Graham Technologies. I am here to support the text zoning amendment that's on the agenda tonight to address private school definition to the zoning ordinance. We have a project for a very low-impact training center and would like to, I think you guys have a site plan, and just like to move it to public hearing for next meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Let me scroll around.
This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that, you know how hard it is for a lawyer to do anything in three minutes. I'm not here tonight to speak about the Burtwood application. I am here tonight to tell you about the Green Energy Ventures application, which is one for data centers. It was filed last September. Part of the application included a hydrogen power plant, and we had requested a text amendment. Still waiting to see what comes out of the hopper, but we've moved forward with the application, the remainder of it, which is data centers. And that application was refiled after receiving staff comments last Friday. Now, the application is for 342 acres. The first page that you have there shows the orange area is that for the Green Energy Ventures application. It is all within your existing comprehensive plan development area. There is, within the application, a proposal for 7,254,000 square footage of data centers, square feet of data centers. The other portion of the handout, and you flipped this thing up if you haven't figured that out. It took me a moment to do so. The first page shows you the proposed uses, which include a number of accessory uses, and the hydrogen power plant, but only as an accessory use. The next page shows you that. Site enhancements, eight-foot-high security fence, 10-foot-high enhanced landscape berm, the sound proffered, this is what we've proffered, 60 dBA in the night, or in the daytime, and 55 at night, public safety. There's an 18-acre dedication for fire and rescue. There is an annual contribution of $100 per square, for 1,000 square feet. And I told you how many square feet there are here. That is something that's proffered. Also, a proffer to purchase a fire and rescue vehicle capable of reaching the top of whatever height these data centers may attain under your ordinance. The last page shows you some of the elevations that we are considering for the development. In any case, it's back in the hopper, and we hope to be before the Planning Commission with this application in the fall. We do not need a comprehensive plan amendment. We do need rezoning. So this one is pending, and we thought that you should know about this because it's something that has been filed and sitting now for over a year, waiting for a text amendment. And we wanted to be sure that you realize that this was coming along and has made certain commitments that I think are consistent with the county's best interest and provide an opportunity for the county, another opportunity in the way of these additional data centers. So wanted to be sure you all were aware of that. Have I used my three minutes?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, that's pretty good. I timed it well. Thank you very much for your attention. And I have with me the directors, a couple of the directors are happy to answer any questions later if you have them. Did I have some extra copies, sir?
Anyone else for public comment? Mr. Dines, anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment. July 18 minutes. Looking for approvals.
Motion to approve the minutes from the 18 July 2023 King George County Planning Commission?
Motion of a second.
Second.
All in favor? Stain? Push carries. Yeah, it's Mr. Hastings online, or from Community Planning Liaison Officer, Naval Support Activity, South Potomac.
No, Mr. Chairman.
All righty. We have no plans for review. So we'll now have a public hearing for a comprehensive plan amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that we...
Well, we just opened public comment for the comprehensive plan amendment.
That's my understanding. I'd like to, for us to consider this amendment last. It seems to be logically following the rezoning requests.
We could vote on it last, I think, but we could sit in public hearings in the order that they're...
Right, we do the public hearings now, right? And then...
Chairman Moss, we do have Mr. Stein back here virtually to give a presentation, just a brief overview of what amendments have been made to the application since it was last brought to the commission. And the applicant is also here and has prepared a presentation. If you'd like to do that before opening for public comment.
I think so. I think it might help provide more information, so those that may have public comment could have more to work with.
Okay. And with that, Alan, can you hear me?
This is good.
Okay. All right, and I will pull up your presentation, and you can take it away.
So you're opening up there locally?
Okay, Mr. Steinback, we're ready.
Sure. While we're getting set up, I just wanted to express my apologies for not being there in person with you tonight. I've been feeling very ill for a few days. I got a positive COVID-19 test this morning, and I didn't want to come share that with you this evening. And this is a rough little case here, so I'm struggling through that a little bit, but it's reasonable I'm not in person with you tonight, so apologies. And I'm still not seeing the presentation, Louis. Is it up?
It's up in the boardroom.
Okay.
So you can go ahead and get started, just let me know when to change the slide.
Yep, let's go ahead on to slide two, addendum. I did want to take this time to review some of the changes that were made. There were some text changes made to the proper statements in the application materials. These include changes that were made after the packet was distributed prior to your last meeting, and some small changes that were made after the last meeting was held. So just to review, so that in case you all had spent some time reviewing the original application and understanding the elements of that, the purpose of this is just to go through the changes that were made. I'm going to try to clarify, the applicants here to clarify if they need to. I also did not go and recommend covering the entire staff presentation from the last meeting, having heard all of that from us from the staff perspective. I thought this addendum of information would be useful for tonight. The second slide that says July 13, 2023, submittal, a couple of these, I don't want to point out all of these bullets, but I did want to highlight the first of these bullets would say, section two, subset two, there was a phrase added, "in excess of 1 million total square feet for the project," or was removed, I should say, "to indicate that the traffic impact analysis will be completed prior to the first site plan approval for data center use regardless of size." So this was in response to some of the conversations that we had staff had had with the applicant regarding the traffic impact analysis requirements, and it allowed us to better understand the phasing for the project relative to that. There was a lot of text changes around phasing, and the purpose of those phasing text changes was to, in part, to enable us to better align that phasing with our understanding of the total build-out of the project, but also this traffic impact analysis question. And we did alter it to allow for that traffic impact analysis to be completed prior to the first site plan approval. The next slide. That information was also updated in the proper amendment statement, just FYI. The next slide, which starts with three zoning narrative at the top. I did want to mention that there was some information added to the zoning narrative regarding the chapter 527, TIA is no longer needed. While we did determine that as a function of the review process and some assumptions about trip generation, there was some question as to whether this project was going to trip the requirements for the chapter 527 review in terms of traffic impact analysis. And after going through the methodology, it fell well below the threshold, so that information was clarified in the application to show that we had determined that in the review process. Next slide. Starts with the top number one level, proper statements, July 18, submittal. This was the day of the last hearing. We did receive some changes to text. These were also responses to the review process, where in section three, subset two, development areas four and five were added to the square footage limitations for accessory uses, which is to say, along with development area six, it was included in that square footage limitation and included confirmation that data centers were not to be built on those particular development areas. Also, there were the noise level changes that were discussed at the last meeting, so there was clarification around that, that the noise was to be in accordance with the draft noise ordinance, and we had some good conversation, public comment, and resolution, I think, of that issue at the last meeting, with some commentary about how that gets enforced and monitored. Next slide, also on July 2018, just to note that the proper amendment statement was also adjusted accordingly. Next slide, July 18, continued with starting at the top, number three zoning narrative. As I was mentioning about development areas four and five, they're now listed under the buildable development area limitations for accessory buildings and structures, and, which is to say, they're now counted as such and have limitations to just those accessory uses and not the primary use of data center. Next slide, please. Subsequent to the last meeting, there was a submittal that updated the proppers in very minor ways. In response to the discussion that occurred around noise at the last meeting, a phrase was added to this, whether one data center or multiple located on the subject parcel, meaning that it doesn't matter how many buildings are emitting the noise, it was just clarifying that that is the case, that it's the collective noise generation coming off the site. That's my interpretation of this, it can be clarified by others if necessary. And also added language agreeing to annual sound testing on the anniversary date of the issuance of the final CO for each building in response to some of the concerns regarding the ongoing maintenance of sound levels, monitoring, reporting, and general compliance around that. And the next slide, the, just confirming that also that information was updated in the proper statement as well as the global proper statements. So, next slide. Is this on the recommendations slide, Louis?
Yes.
Okay. I did want to take a moment to say that staff is happy to engage in any questions or comments that may ensue after the public comment, and the applicant has been able to give some responses to some of the questions. We do know for sure that the applicant is going to review the proposal in general and review some of the topics that were discussed last time, and also address some of the questions that came up at the last meeting, so I'm gonna let the applicant go over that tonight, but I'll be listening in to all the commentary and will remain throughout the meeting if you all would like to engage in further questions and comments from me in particular. We did identify within these recommendations several things that need to be clarified. One is that we had recommended approval of the proposed comprehensive plan amendments. We wanted to clarify that those comprehensive plan amendments and that staff recommendation was in part formed on the basis of a 2232 review that was conducted. We requested additional materials from the applicant to understand the location of utilities. That information was supplied and reviewed. Also, in the spirit of that section of the Code of Virginia, which doesn't have a very, a whole lot of rules associated with it about how to conduct these kinds of reviews, Dominion Energy did come and present in that combined workshop with the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission, and those two things constituted substantial completion of that review process and met the code requirements for that. We also, with respect to the second recommended action, determined something that we missed in our review, which was that your code requires that any parcel that is less than 10 acres cannot be zoned industrial. So there is one of the subject parcels within this application, 21-48D, that is one of the parcels owned by William Reed. Mr. Reed owns several, three parcels within the subject parcels of the application. 2148D is .44 acres and therefore does not meet the 10-acre requirement. What I've recommended is that this be approved subject to some sort of recombination or not allowing that use to ensue until those properties meet that standard of 10 acres in some method. So that's a qualification, clarification of that recommended action on number two for that one. Otherwise, we are remaining with the staff recommendation to approve the proppers as submitted and now updated according to this presentation and what you all received, and also the special exception permit that allows other uses of the drawing permits associated with action number four. So that concludes my comments. I'm happy to take any questions or be involved in discussion at later points in the meeting.
I have one question. Is the applicant now in a position to inform us as to who the ultimate beneficiary investor will be for the project?
Can you hold that question until we get to the discussion? I'd rather go back to public hearing. Let's hear the public's piece, and then we can engage our discussion. If they want to. I mean, still have public here, public comment open for the comprehensive plan amendment. They can if they like.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and other members of the Planning Commission. My name is Charlie Payne, I represent the applicant. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I do have a PowerPoint presentation, but I'm not going to go through it. It's the same presentation, basically, that I gave you a couple of weeks ago, so I'm just going to follow staff's lead and just give you some quick highlights. And staff did update you on the proffer amendments that we had discussed at the last meeting, and then what we had obviously had submitted afterwards, mostly focused on sound, 60 dBA during the day and 55 in the evening, and that there would be annual sound testing on the anniversary date of the certificate of occupancy permit issued for each facility, and that would be done before a certificate of occupancy permit was issued. But just some real quick highlights, just regarding this project again. Data center projects, this is a data center project only. This is, you know, the prior projects had a mix of various different uses, including solar and manufacturing and distribution, and that's not this project. This project is basically, is only a data center project with supporting accessory uses. Obviously, you all know data center investment in Commonwealth, Virginia is a priority for the state, is also a part of the county's economic development initiatives. So the concept is to obviously locate a data centers in those locations, citing it near, obviously, other industrial uses, including a former power plant, a coal-burning power plant. What this, this location is ideal, not only because of the fact that it is near industrial use as an off a major road artery, but also that it has a private water source that will be regulated by DEQ, and is currently permitted for that, for that purpose, for purposes of industrial uses. Of course, the special exception permit addresses the new use, and it's cited near large transmission lines. Those are the key factors here. We have, in our application, proffered 7.25 million square feet total. That would be multiple buildings, it wouldn't be one building, that would be multiple buildings. Typically, the minimum size of the buildings are 250,000 square feet, so you would have multiple sites, up to 7.25 million. As we noted, from an economic development perspective, not only is this a significant job creator, job generator, paying a high wage of over $100,000 per, but it also will generate per million square feet about $16 to $18 million in net tax revenue for the county. You know, do the math on 7.25 square feet, and that's a significant number. The county gross tax revenues in 2022 were about roughly $44 million. So this is a big project. This is a project that can, in essence, have lots of significant positive impacts for a community, whether it's new capital improvement projects, public safety projects, school projects, infrastructure projects. The project also has proffered a significant amount of open space at, you know, roughly 40%, including two areas we'll be preserving of 80 acres and 75 acres. We have proffered significant setbacks, especially from Route 3 of 300 feet minimum with buffers. Same from other road arteries that the, that the project would be developed on, including Fletcher's Chapel and Birchwood Creek Road, 150 feet, 100 feet respectively, setbacks, including buffers. And as noted, you know, sound was also a significant issue, and we addressed that consistent with the county's draft text amendment for data centers. Again, the private water source, I think there were some questions about how that's regulated. That'd be regulated by DEQ as it is today, it'll be permitted by DEQ for any amendment. Of course, we have an MOU executed with the service authority to allocate about $600,000 of our permitted use to the county for its potable water facility that it's planning, usually planning to build. We're also be dedicating acreage for that facility as well. So again, we see this as a great partnership with King George County. We look forward to it, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Just repeat my question, if you are now in a position to inform us as to who the ultimate beneficiary investor behind the project is?
Sure. So, you know, this is, Burtwood is obviously the owner, contract holder of the parcels, and is also the applicant, which is not unusual. The eventual user will be Amazon.
I have a question about light pollution, of all things. One of our members of the public asked, are you going to be lead compliant for, for light pollution or some other standard, or how do you suggest I close that out?
We have proffered that we would, you know, obviously, I guess, just a generic term of eliminating any light pollution, there would be, you know, only a maximum height of where lighting could be. That lighting would have to be downlining, and it could not bleed over, if you will, into the adjoining property. I think it's a half a foot. I think that's the proffer.
So basically, to our current ordinance?
Basically, that's right, to your current ordinance, and the lighting would be directed only on our site. Thank you.
So that's my understanding, that parcel 2147 is a split parcel, and that the second part of that deeded property is adjacent to the Maury property, and it's not under review for zoning change, but do you have any plans to develop that piece as well?
Well, only 2147 north of Route 3 is part of this application, if my memory serves me, and I believe that that's consistent with staff's recommendation as well.
Okay, so...
South of Route 3 is not, not part of this project.
Okay.
Other than the right-of-way, I mean, your easement for your water pipe?
That's right.
And there's a...
294, correct. 294, correct.
Pump station there. And that, is that where you're considering the river access, public access?
Yes, sir. The, the river access will be on 2143, which is the Maury site. We're dedicating eight acres there and providing access. Thank you.
Under accessory uses, is there a possibility that you might use trying to think of it, the small modular reactors in the future? They're going to be evolving as a replacement to help with the crunch that Dominion Power has, trying to provide enough power for, for all the data centers that are coming online in Virginia.
Not part of our current planning. And I don't believe it was listed in our accessory.
No, I guess I'm asking is that would it be allowed accessory use? And you don't have any intention right now to?
Not, not now, just traditional load electricity for, for purposes, for, from Dominion, for purposes of providing electricity to the site.
Just to pick up on that, is, is your understanding that it would be a permissible use in the future?
Give me a second to pull the proffer statement. And I don't know how staff would, would also interpret that, but. The electric generation right now is limited to generators only, transmission substations.
Do you, do you think that a small modular nuclear reactor would come under the heading of generation?
I don't, I don't, I'm not qualified to answer that question, but we have enlisted it as an accessory use.
It wouldn't fall under private utilities?
Well, I would assume, I'm not, again, I'm not an expert in that arena. And if it's being produced by Dominion, it'd be a public utility, not a private utility. And we have no planning to generate our own energy generation on the site, which would be private.
You, you would have backup generation, standby generation?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. So to answer your question, I'm not trying to avoid it, we haven't, it's not part of our current planning.
I guess what I'm asking is the door open for that to be a permitted use?
You know, I, one, I, again, not know enough to be dangerous in this arena, but I would think that that would require a lot of permitting from the state in a federal perspective. So in addition to the local perspective as whether or not it would be allowed use. And then two, it would require a significant amount of permitting from the state and the feds is my bet.
For the purposes of standby generation, I'm comfortable that it would in no way, shape or form be a cost effective means of providing that.
That's probably very true.
I have a question regarding energy use and management. Are there any features in this current design that would recover the waste heat for useful energy as part of the plan?
Yeah, so, you know, Amazon is obviously one of the largest purchasers of renewable energy in the world. And they are constantly on all their sites looking to, energy is one of the most expensive things to operate these facilities. So they're constantly looking for ways to be more efficient. So yes, they are, their, their systems are, and their technology that they're gearing towards for their design of the buildings is for energy efficiency.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of questions about your proffer statement.
Yes, sir.
The, the amended statement. I'm reading under section four, I guess, the cash proffer for public safety impacts has been pulled out?
No, sir, it's there. It's in there. It's actually section five, three.
So am I looking at something wrong here? Proffer amendment statement dated 26 July?
No, I'm sorry, you're, you're, you're looking at the Birchwood proffer amendment. It's in, it's in the global proffer, the actual global proffer, section five, three.
Okay. So that clarifies the question in my mind that things in the global proffer statement are not necessarily removed in the amended one.
Correct. They're very similar.
Right.
But yeah, the sort of meat on the bones, if you will, in regards to cash proffers are in the global proffer.
Okay. All right, so there was a discussion between you and I at our last meeting about a model based analysis of sound prior to asking for the occupancy permit. Is that in here anywhere? I didn't see that either.
Yes, sir. So we've proffered that we would have to provide a sound study prior to a certificate of occupancy permit issued for each building.
Okay.
And then we would test it annually on the anniversary date of that CO.
And we discussed doing a model based one before you even started construction.
Yeah, we, I mean, you know, we, we can, we're, you know, we're doing our modeling all the time, but it, it would not be, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be effective in regards to what you'd be looking for. The, the effect, the key effect would be at the time that the building is constructed in place. That's, that's the key time that you want to know what the noise is. Everything else is sort of speculation as to what it's going to be. So it wouldn't make a whole lot of.
I'm assuming your design staff is doing that kind of a model based analysis before they even
Sure.
get started on design.
Right. And our, and our, and our analysis, yeah. And our analysis today is showing what we've proffered, that we can do 6055.
Would you mind sharing that with us?
Sure.
All right. That's all I've got at the moment.
Mr. Chair, if there's no more questions for the applicant at this time, it'd still be available later. I would suggest opening the public hearing for the public to speak.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One, one other note, I'm sorry, I meant to say this. For purposes of our comprehensive plan amendment request, I know the Fairfax's did not want their parcels included in that. We, we have no objection if, if the commission desires to withdraw their, their, their parcels from that amendment. You know, our attention was simply to only, to request an amendment on the parcels that would be impacted by this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie Fairfax, 623 Kings Highway. To follow up on that, please do not change the comprehensive plan to include properties the applicant does not own or control and are not covered by the current application. You just heard Mr. Payne's comment. And what I understood was the county, in one regard, initially was trying to make a neat, tidy boundary line that would incorporate the applicant's requested properties. However, I would argue we had a neat, tidy boundary line and the applicant is asking to go outside of that well defined area. This should not require the county to extend the bounds even further than the applicant is requesting. I fear that would set a dangerous precedent. The staff report agrees. Quote, "It seems that current boundaries ellipsis, along with the land use policies specific to the triangle, were very intentionally established to preserve the county's rural character and to define and limit appropriate areas for industrial uses and development. If the amendment ellipsis and/or the policies regarding appropriate areas for industrial development are approved as requested, then it may set a precedent for future development and infrastructure expansion that makes it difficult to further limit ellipsis. The county's proposed tech zone at Sealston does not include the land across from Sealston Elementary or the land around Friedland Lane. The tech zone is clearly defined and easily discernible. So if the county is rightly, through this tech zone initiative, not involving the property of other landowners, why should there be a change to the comprehensive plan beyond what the applicant is requesting? Mr. Minor was very clear in his incentive zone presentation and I appreciated this greatly. He never markets land without an owner's permission. However, the message set by a change to the comprehensive plan is that the county would look favorably upon a rezoning to industrial for any one of these additional properties. However, none of the landowners are asking for this. My family's property is directly across from Sealston Elementary. It contains three family homes and is actively farmed. Is that an area that we would think sounds like a great idea to eventually go industrial? The applicant didn't request it, the landowners don't want it, and it sets a dangerous precedent. Please do not include any properties beyond the applicant's request in any change you consider making to the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd Fairfax, 623 Kings Highway. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Planning Commissioners. During the July 11th Board of Supervisors' Discussion on Technology and Defense Production Zones, Supervisor Cupka noted in her discussion that it is the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors who change the comprehensive plan maps during that planning process every five years. And that'll come up again in 2024 when the comp plan gets updated again. And that would be the opportunity for the comp plan maps to be redrawn. Furthermore, none of the supervisors disagreed with Ms. Cupka. I also agree with her. And that time that she referenced is not tonight. The only amendments to the comp plan that should be given, should be even considered tonight are those that include the parcels the applicant owns or controls no more. I believe you'll find language to that effect in the most recent set of sample motions, two C, that specifically includes GIS map four. There are potential land value implications to properties that lie nearby to industrial uses or are located in zones targeted by the county to be developed industrial. I've heard it said that the land values will go up. I have an example of the exact opposite. Retired Sheriff Moose Dobson, who served this county well for 35 years, can't be here this evening. He's home faithfully caring for his wife. He specifically asked me to tell you the following. He wants very much for you to know. A few years back, he approached a lender for a home equity loan. The appraisal returned lower than he expected. When he asked why, his banker said that his property had been devalued by 10% because of its proximity to the industrial uses of the power plant and the landfill. Please remember this actual, real life example. Also, regarding the idea that the county is pushing this area to be developed industrial, please note at the end of the first sample motion of the next hearing case, the optional language specifically quote probable future requirements of the James Madison District to encourage compatible economic development activities. What does that sound like? It would be good for you to study that motion before taking action on this case. Finally, one of the goals of the comp plan is stated to be, quote, "Preserve extant agricultural uses by policy and consider loss of agriculturally productive soils and farmland in development review," unquote. So please do preserve the agricultural uses that are being targeted by the comp plan amendment that are beyond the parcels the applicant owns or controls. Thank you.
So now, is anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
So we'll close public comment on the comprehensive plan amendment.
We'll open public hearings on conditional rezoning application case, case Z 2023 0009.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. I believe there's one more speaker.
Hi, I'm Catherine Allison, 6352 Chatterton Lane. So I've spoken a few times, please bear with me. I'm not always the best at this. But I do have to agree with Ms. Fairfax because the comprehensive plan is there for King George. And while we are obviously courting data centers like Virginia, because I did a little bit of research myself and we have given them a tax rebate for coming, I'm not sure that the idea was a, such a large data center. You know, the usual ones are about 330,000 square foot. And there's a lot to consider. I'm wondering, have you all driven past this area and seen the extent of the land that's being requested? I did a little bit of calculating and it's pretty much like almost five spots away from mall centers. That's a lot of land for King George. You know, when, when we gave them a tax rebate to come here, I have to wonder, with the comprehensive plan, were they not thinking, you know, the usual data center size, 220,000 square foot? 9.4 billion square feet here? Just something to think about along with a lot of environmental impact that's going to come with that, even with all of the things that they've done. We have the opportunity to live in a beautiful place. And I always say this, and I know it sounds silly, but once it's gone, it is gone. It will not come back. So leave the comprehensive plan, I think. Reviewing it when the time comes up, that, that's what it's there for personally. That, that's why it's there. So that everybody can discuss it and decide what should be done in the next five years. And if it should be changed, then, then it should be changed appropriately. Thank you.
Hello, I live at 6352 Chatterton Lane, that's my mom. And personally, I think this is atrocious. I'm 20, I have lived here for all 20 years of my life. And the whole point of living here is that it is King George. If we wanted to be surrounded by this, we would live in Fredericksburg. We choose to be here. I understand that he wants to land by the old coal plant and he wants to build on top of pristine historic farmland. Why does he need both? I do not, I, I don't understand why. It's just so much. It's too much. We live in King George. On top of this, there are major water concerns. I am going to school for chemistry and there is a huge concern currently with PFAs, polyfluoroalkyl substances. These are also known as forever chemicals. These come from plastics. How is this going to be cooled? Is it going to be running through plastic tubing and then dumped directly into the Rappahannock River? That is unthinkable. These never go away, they never dissolve, these will be in us forever. If it must happen, soil and water needs to be tested. How often? It needs to be six months minimum and it needs to be by a company not chosen by the people proposing this. It needs to be chosen by the Board of Supervisors for all possible contaminants, heavy metals, PFAs, and whatever else is of concern to us and our bodily functions. And I know I'm not the only one who feels this way. I don't think a single person has stood up and said that they support this. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Hobie Mitchell, I live in Aldi, Virginia. I have only one brief comment is that your comprehensive plan that this is located, all this in, is a sufficient area already. And so you should think about that when you're making a decision about any modifications of the comp plan. Thank you.
My name is Gina Debenard. I live at 206 Stonewall Drive in Fredericksburg, Virginia. But I am here on behalf of my parents who live at 1569 Kings Highway, right up here in front of the Birchwood Power Plant Site or the area where Birchwood Power Plant was located. I actually had signed up to speak later, but I think I would like to speak now. Because I have heard Mr. Lemming stand up and. I have heard Mr. Lemming stand up and talk about another proposal for Green Valley Ventures, and I have heard Mr. Payne talk about his proposal, which is the Birchwood facility. So if I'm not mistaken, we're looking at two different plans that we will need to look at and possibly approve. I am hearing that we have a second proposal. Mr. Lemming is presenting, but I'm also wondering, is it necessary to jump in and make a recommendation and a vote this month on the proposal that Mr. Payne is putting forth without knowing and fully looking at the Lemming proposal as well? I think, I had not really planned to speak tonight, and as you can see, I've jotted notes. I usually come with lots written down, but tonight I've just jotted a few notes here. But the thing I want to say is that I am just amazed that we are looking at this Amazon facility at 7.5 million square feet, which is one and a half times the largest facility in the United States right now, which is located in Oregon, which is not without its We're a small community, and I think we're jumping in really quickly to approve such a large project for our small community without making sure that we have taken care of everything that needs to be taken care of. For example, the excessive noise concerns, the water usage for cooling, the clearing of vegetation and wildlife, leading to rainwater runoff issues, contamination of the land in the Rappahannock watershed, or possible contamination of the land and Rappahannock watershed, fire hazards, flammable materials, and questions such as, how far is it going to be off of Route 3? And I hear 300 feet. My parents' property sits right on Route 3. Is it 300 feet back of my parents' property, or is it 300 feet from the road? Light pollution, annual testing. Annual testing, when my family will be dealing with 365 days worth of that noise, not just one annual test day. And I will say, I had a conversation yesterday with Mr. Payne and brought up the noise issue, and he pointed out that he lives in the city of Fredericksburg, or is in the city of Fredericksburg and deals with the train noise. And I pointed out to him that I also live in the city and have lived downtown, and the train comes by, and I hear the noise for a minute and a half each time the train makes its circuit through Fredericksburg. This noise is going to be the noise equivalent to a vacuum cleaner running nonstop from 6:00 AM till 10:00 PM at night. It's going to make it real difficult for the people in that area who want to maintain those areas as their homes to continue life as they have known it. And I will say, life as I've known it consisted of being able to sit on the screen porch and hear the Bob White in the evening and have the relative peace of a rural neighborhood. It's not going to be the same for my family if we have to listen to data centers at 60 decibels for 14 to 16 hours of our day.
Ma'am?
Yes.
We have time?
Can I make one more statement?
If it's very short.
Very short. I also would like to comment on the fact that I was told that a Board of Supervisors member made the comment that there are going to be families or parcels of land that become the, is going to be sacrificed within this project. I kind of resent being one of the families that becomes the sacrificial lamb in this project, and I hope that in your good conscience, you will consider those of us who own the two, the four, the three, the five, the six, the seven, the eight, and the nine acres, who happen to be surrounded by this large tract of land from Sealston down to La Grange School.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all.
I'm Danielle Limero at 4363 Caledon Road. I did not prepare a speech because I've never been to one of these before, but after listening to all of the residents, I just want to voice my concern as well, and that I also am opposed to any of the changes. Thank you.
My name is Kalen Weeks. I live at 584 Caledon Road. I'm about a mile and a half through the woods as the eagle flies from where the data center would probably be. And I just want to say that corporations never have our best interest in mind. It might look good today, but in five years, in 10 years, I don't really imagine that they're going to stay in their little confines, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Janice Ray. I live at 10438 Fletcher's Chapel Road, my property, and my view will be directly affected by this development. My family and I moved here in 2021 from Baltimore City with the hopes of raising our children in a rural country environment. We had the option to move to DC and several other areas, but we chose King George because of the farmland. We chose King George because my children can look outside and see stars at night, which is something they could not do in Baltimore City. I just want to say, as a citizen, I am not interested in this development. I don't like that it's happening, and I really would hate to move, but this is just not what I want. And I feel like I speak for a lot of people in this room and in the area that simply say, as citizens and tax-paying residents, we don't want this here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Arne Eliason. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation. I don't have a foot-thick file folder, but I do have some passion. And I'll start by saying, as you drive from Fredericksburg or Stafford to King George, there's a sign posted, "Welcome to the Northern Neck." And all that implies to me is it's rural character, it's agricultural history, and I want to make a strong voice that putting up hundreds of thousands of feet of Amazon boxes seems to be very ill-advised. My family moved here from the DC area where we were chased out by Amazon development, only to find that Amazon is everywhere. So I appreciate you ferreting out who's behind Birchwood. It's good to know. But what do we do when Amazon goes belly up or has trouble? And we do need to consider all the comments that these folks have made. I very strongly ask that you all reconsider any of these sort of developmental considerations. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm James Jenkins. I live at 8464 Summer Beam Drive. At home, I run the sort of very miniature-scale version of what's being proposed here. I run a small server cluster to serve my own needs. And let me tell you, this is a terrible, terrible, terrible idea. The level of noise you're talking about is atrocious. I can barely sleep with the servers in my room. The power consumption is outrageous, and we know Amazon doesn't follow regulations. I mean, you don't have to look far to find proof of that, and the benefits to the community are not going to be as great as they've been exaggerated by the applicant. I am pretty much adult, and yet I was able to set this up with a little bit of technical know-how. I can run my own applications and stream my own media, whatever. And it's not difficult to do. There's not going to be a lot of jobs. The jobs aren't high-paying anymore. There's 100,000-plus. My friend works as a systems administrator down in Norfolk, and he's still below the poverty line. It's not all it's hyped up to be. It's not going to be a great turnaround for King George into a good industrial area. It's just a place for Amazon to dump their smog buildings, and this is a beautiful rural community. I don't want to see that happen here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Denise Belmer. I reside at 9500 Warmen Drive. I've heard so many things, and I appreciate all the comments and the amendments to things. And I know that we need some more tax revenue and that this, we've been looking in this industrial area for so long to have some great partner. Harris Teeter didn't work out. We had Birchwood Power Facility, which is great, but the electricity was not staying in King George. We have the landfill here. Most of the trash was being brought from other states because it was so cost-effective to bring it to our landfill, and now we're continuing to build up as a result. I keep hearing from the people who are proposing these data centers about how much revenue it's going to bring in, and their DBA levels, and how we are going to be great partners to this community. But I hear over and over again, it's, everything is speculative. We don't know. We're in a rural setting. This is something new, something that hasn't happened here, and all we keep hearing from all these other communities that have data centers are all the issues that we're talking about this evening and all of our members are speaking about. Like others, we moved out here so we could have peace and quiet. Yes, I do hear the landfill still. The power plant, when it was up and running, people in our neighborhood could hear it all day long. We heard it at night, and it would sometimes wake me up in the middle of the night. Well, what's going to happen when we have the vacuum or the blender down the street running 24/7? So we can have these monitors on these facilities and say, oh, the DBA is only this during the day. Well, that's wonderful, but what about all these other communities and these houses that can hear it higher than that? When they would come out to check the DBAs from the power plant, they would come to all the areas where it was by a power line or at the end of our neighborhood, but it wasn't going to those people's homes. We have to live here. Is our health at risk here? Are property values going to be detrimentally affected by this? And am I going to be able to sell my home if that is the case? So I'm asking for all of you to think long-term about how this affects our environment, and the amount of power it's going to need to actually work is going to be astronomical. I'm not sure if Dominion's going to be able to do this. So I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll close public hearing on comprehensive plan amendment. And open public hearing on conditional rezoning application, case number 0202300099.
Good evening. My name is Daryl Brightenstein. I live at 1320 Kings Highway, and I also own the plot, excuse me, I own the plot at 1326 Kings Highway, where I plan on building my retirement home. Both of those are on the western edge of the farm that's on the south side of Route 3, which is the third phase of the data center. I do appreciate Birchwood was willing to talk. They did send out a letter, and I was able to visit and talk to them. I do appreciate that. I do appreciate that they've changed, you know, from 70 dB and 65 at night to 60 and 55. That'll be a big difference. But I still worry about, even at 60 dB, that's going to be a constant hum that I will hear outside all the time. And one of the supervisors blatantly lied to me and said, oh, your property value will go up. I don't know if he's crazy or if he just has no concept of, you know, if you make a piece of property less desirable, it's going to go down in value. The other thing is, they say they're going to be testing on the annual anniversary of when they get their occupancy permit. Well, like, the farm plot is going to have five buildings. So are they going to be testing five times a year, or are they just going to do it, you know, on one of those anniversaries? Or maybe they plan on building the buildings and getting the occupancy on the same day of the year, all five buildings? Anyhow, I'm less worried now than I was a year ago, but I still have concerns, and I'll probably have concerns until after they build it and see what happens. But my fear is it will make my home less enjoyable, especially for outdoor activities. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for having me again. My name is Brent Huntsinger. I'm with Friends of the Rappahannock, a watershed group who preserves the scenic and wild nature of the Rappahannock River and its health. I will be brief. I spoke a month ago. We know that data centers are coming to the watershed. They have been approved, or parks have been approved in surrounding counties. We know that the revenue is hard to deny. $20 million for every million square feet approximately of data center space, that's a lot of money. We know that the county needs water to use, and we know that it's not going to come from groundwater, because the EQ has said so, east of 95. And it's going to have to come from somewhere, and it's going to come from the Rappahannock in this case. And this is only the first, now, they already have their straw in the water. But so this is kind of like the first case, along with the Caroline County Water Withdrawal Application, which I could be over there speaking on that. But there's a few things that we still have concerns with, and that is the potential tree clearing, the urban canopy, the removal of tree canopy. Lot 2144, 40 acres. Lot 2147, 151 acres. Lot 2125, 117 acres. Now, I don't believe that these will all be clear-cut, but if this does happen, there has to be, it has to be cleared in a way that the buffers are maintained, and when they're clearing, they're keeping existing canopy in place over time, so that we're not just clearcutting and then replanting for our buffers. We also need to ensure that our best management practices for stormwater and ENS can handle the runoff. Currently, with these huge rains we're getting, our BMPs are not designed to handle that. I understand that that's a problem with the Virginia BMP Handbook. They're working on that currently. I also have not heard any more conversation about the potential compromise that was proposed, about keeping the Disington Lane property out of this proposal and keeping it in the Rappahannock River settlement area. I'm also wondering about the reuse of gray water, as that being an option. It's been used a lot in Loudoun County. So as you're routing all your water eventually over here to the hop yard, what is the possibility of reusing that gray water to do that? It's being used, it's out in the future, but it would be smart to start thinking about what that would take with that infrastructure. We know the location of transmission lines, but what other lines will be required? Where will they be located, and what kind of clearing and fragmentation will that bring down the road? Finally, addressing the power needs, Dominion has indicated that they will require from PJM 8% more power in the coming years. With that, will be a variety of power sources, including utility-scale solar, which has the potential to continue to carve up our landscape. So just things to keep in mind as we go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Todd Fairfax, 623 Kings Highway. I said it last time, I'll say it again. We are very thrilled that the applicant has proffered lower sound levels. We're equally thrilled that they have proffered aggregate sound, no matter how many sources, must be below this certain level. That takes into account the reality factor that multiple sources add in terms of sound. So we're thrilled with both of those things. A question I would have for you that's not clear in my mind, and perhaps you can discuss it, is where are the provisions for complaint-based testing? They're proffered... They're proffered specifically talk about annual testing. Excellent. We think that's wonderful. But what about those days other than that one day a year? It's not clear to me how complaint-based noise analysis would then be handled. Would it be three samples done on the prospective property line where the violation is alleged? And if so, would they be five-minute samples or 10-minute samples? And how far separated in time are each of those? Do you do it over a three-hour period? Do you do it over a four or an eight or a 12-hour period? How do you guarantee that those samples all contained within either the daytime period or the nighttime period since crossing over that dividing line changes the rules? I'm just curious how that would happen. Obviously, it would be a zoning matter and zoning would get involved, but how long would zoning have to respond? And how long then would they have to expect remediation of an alleged problem? And what happens when there are more than one property owner surrounding that is complaining of noise? Again, I think what they have proffered is really good on sound levels and what they have proffered on aggregate noise sound levels is really good. And what they've proffered on annual sound testing is really good. But what about that case that I just asked about? I don't know the answers to those. I hope you know the answers to those or have some ideas, or maybe you can discuss that. I think that's an important part of the conversation, still needs to be answered. And whatever that is, needs to be applicable to this case, which is the ag to industrial rezoning, and also the next case, which is just the 2150 Birchwood proper, property. So please consider those things. I think we, I think it would be very good to have some answers to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie Fairfax, 623 Kings Highway. I again want to echo the fact that I really appreciate them meeting our noise standards in the proposed ordinance. I do want to ask though, if we're going to give them the occupancy permit based on the testing, that would have to be model-based, wouldn't it? Because they're not going to be fully operational. Like the, the Amazon data center is up in Great Oak. They aren't 100% operational before they get the occupancy permit. So I do think we need to consider that and figure out how we're going to make sure. I mean, I'm thankful that they have made that commitment, but I was a teacher for a long time and I know you have to hold people accountable to what they have promised. The second thing I wanted to point out is depending on when the annual anniversary falls, I would think the noise level produced in January on a 17-degree day would be very different than in August on a 98-degree day. So we need to make sure that we are considering the highest volumes that it's producing. And again, we need to be able to respond to noise-based complaints. And the important thing to remember about a noise-based complaint is it could be the same person who complains three times, if they happen to be the person closest to it. So we can't say three different people or something like that, but we need to, we need to have a noise-based complaint option. When the power plant was put in, my parents, they're, they were disturbed by the lights. Their bedroom turned into a discotheque and they were able to go to Birchwood and have that problem solved. And it went away and it was a non-issue. But we can't call 1-800-AMAZON. We've got to have some of these things in place so that we have ways to address concerns and they can be solved. The other thing I wanted to point out is Chief Moody in the staff report indicated that the cost of a new engine is $2 million and the wait time to order it is 18 to 24 months. Now, they say the first phase will not be done until about 24 months, but we can't have half of a truck. We need a whole truck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Peyton Moncur, 12,000 LaGrange Lane. I don't have a prepared speech, but I do appreciate all the citizens' voices that have come tonight to speak and thank you for listening to them. I feel like I represent neighbors who could not be here tonight. We're a stone's throw from the property being talked about and we live on the Rappahannock, so we have dual interest. And just on a personal note, I find it kind of ironic that all this technology is coming, but we can't get internet. So just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie Payne, again representing the applicant. I thought it'd be important, listening to many of these fine citizens talk about their concerns about the project, and we appreciate that. And, you know, we have heard, obviously, this, this project has been in the works, if you know, arguably a couple of years. And we've heard a lot of the dialogue that members of the community have had with the Planning Commission and with the Board of Supervisors, and we appreciate that. And the design of our project is intentionally established, if you will, or laid out to address those concerns. You'll see that our project has extensive setbacks preserving tree line areas, preserving open space. We've got over 40% of our project is open space of the 800-plus acres. You know, that's roughly 350 acres is open space. 150-plus of that is preserved space. We have dedicated eight acres for access to the river. We have proffered that we would be no closer than 500 feet from the river. We have proffered setbacks along in screening and maintaining preserved tree lines along Route 3. And we have proffered, I think more importantly, which was the number one big issue, was addressing the sound concern, the noise concerns. On the, on our water quality questions, you know, these projects, this data center projects, you know, we're obviously using the current permit. And I think I want folks to understand that this is not unregulated. It is a very regulated process. This intake permit is regulated by DEQ. It's been in place for a very long time and is in place during the operations of Birchwood. These uses discharge non-contact cooling water, right? So non-contact cooler water does not come into contact with raw material. It doesn't have intermediate product or waste product or finished product. So it's not coming in contact with any hazardous materials as it's cooling these facilities. And DEQ requires testing before any discharge. So this is a very, very regulated process and I don't want, I don't want the community to think that we're getting a free pass here because that's far from it. The siting, it's really important to understand the siting here. It's a different model. This is a different model in regards to where traditional data centers have been located. Traditional data centers have been located near lots of density, near lots of development. And, you know, that, it worked for a while and now there's a growing need for more data centers. So the process and the thought process is to put them in areas where are not so dense, but still near necessary infrastructure, like transmission line, a major road arteries and, and a water supply system. So that's the thinking. And when you put them on campuses and you buffer yourself from other users, and it's not one big building. There's a multiple buildings. Each building will have to be tested. It's not just, you know, just one building for five. No, we don't get a one-for-five, if you will, testing round. To Mr. Kendrick's prior request, we can provide sound analysis at final site plan stage. So you get three bites at the apple here. You get it at site plan, you get it at CO, and then you get it annually. So hopefully that will address some of the concerns as well. Anyways, I wanted to make those points. I appreciate what everyone has said, including the competing, the alleged competing application. I think it's fair to say that this application is focused on one use, and that's data center uses. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have as well.
The water temperature, the discharge water is...
I don't know the...
Hot water. Do we know? I mean, do we, DEQ probably has standards...
He was going to regulate that water being discharged. So I, my assumption is not only is it, it's going to be tested for any, you know, chemicals whatnot that it may have come in contact with the water, but also any, any discharge that would affect its eventual location.
I'm comfortable they do test for temperature plume.
So I just want to clarify, when you say that the water doesn't make contact with anything, it is treated with glycol and pH-balanced, filtered? It is altered before it's run through those systems and then it needs to be altered again before it's discharged? Is that correct?
My understanding is it's not treated. It doesn't need to be treated, but it's, but it is tested before it's discharged. Now, unlike potable water, it's potable water which is treated.
That's contradictory to what I was told when I visited the trailer at Birchwood.
Birchwood, their operations was obviously different than a data center.
We were talking about this project.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to make comment?
Respectfully, Catherine Allison, 6352 Chatterton Lane. What I just heard isn't taking into account the fact that they are asking for amendments to something that has already been set up to guide King George. We shouldn't have to be doing them the favor while they're dangling a lot of money in front of us, which is great. After living here 20 years, we're all still here. The buses still run, the roads are paved. Okay? So think about the fact that what you're hearing today is, it's huge. People don't necessarily want a data campus, period. We have our plan in place. What we heard last time actually was all or nothing. That, that's what was discussed before. All or nothing. And everybody was talking about maybe coming to a, you know, north of Route 3 or whatever and not the southern part that's against the Rappahannock. And all or nothing. So if you change part of that into agriculture, from agriculture to industrial, and they don't want it because it's not all or nothing, we're stuck with that as well, that it's now industrial. And all of these things that are being discussed, if you just don't do it, the problem's solved. All of the noise, all of the pollution, because like I said, while we're being dangled with a lot of money, we are still here after 20 years. Things are still running. And how many of these people live here and are going to have to deal with this? I encourage you all really just to drive and look at the sheer volume of land that's going to be changed, even if it's offset, even if it's hidden, it's still going to be there, changing everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Samantha Allison, 6352 Chatterton Lane. I still have more ecological concerns. My first point, how does water not make contact with anything? I don't understand that point. Nobody plans to pollute waterways. Nobody says, I'm going to go dump copious amounts of chemicals into the Rappahannock River. It happens. It's not on purpose. Stuff fails. Tests fail. People are lazy at work. Everything cannot be perfectly regulated and they cannot say that nothing will falter. We live here, we drink our water. What happens when it floods and the water is then sitting in what? We all have groundwater. We have a well. Is that going to be going into our groundwater? These are all things that we need to consider and we need to protect what we have. The Rappahannock is already partially polluted. We don't need to pour more stuff into it. We don't need to be purposefully pumping millions of gallons of water every single day into our waterways. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question for Mr. Payne. It's regarding the land that's being donated for riverfront use. It's my understanding, it's on an embankment and it's not usable land for any other purpose. Can, can you explain that, what that land that's being donated for park use and riverfront uses? Just clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we started this process, one of the focuses of discussions with staff, especially in regards to environmental and recreational, was to provide access to the river. And that's what that eight acres is designated for. We're happy to work with the community in regards to, you know, improving the process to access the river. So we're happy to be a partner in that as well. Thank you.
Just to answer a question. I think the question was, there's a steep embankment. We're, we're willing to help access to the river, including with the embankment.
James Jenkins, 8464 Summer Beam Drive. I just wanted to talk about noise again. It's really unreasonable to expect that noise and annual testing will provide accurate data of noise levels as load increases. And if you have one of the largest data centers in the world, you're going to have load increase. If any other Amazon data center fails, it's going to fail over to our data centers. And that, that peak noise is going to fluctuate. And I can almost guarantee you that it's going to go well above 60 decibels in the daytime and 50 decibels at night. It's just, that complaint-based thing is really necessary, but really the bottom line is that those noise targets, I think, are, are unattainable and they're not going to, that annual testing isn't going to represent the actual noise levels that are going to be present in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny Spray, 10438 Fletcher's Chapel Road. I just want to say that my two young children, who are eight and four, are more interested in having yard and outside space that they can enjoy. There are plenty of recreational things here to do in King George, such as Caledon State Park and other access points that we can go to that don't compromise our visual, sound. They don't compromise our property lines or property values. That is not an interesting point for me as a parent of young children. I don't think that that is something any of us are interested in.
Thank you. Stein, so we have anyone online?
I'm here. Chris, can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
All right, I'm Tyreek and I just want to make it known that this is a great thing for the county and tax revenue is going to help this county become a greater thing. I just want that known. And at the end of the day, we should allow Amazon and AWS to come here.
Ms. Stein, is any others?
Annalise Jenkins, 8464 Summer Beam Drive. And what hasn't been addressed yet are the schoolchildren in Sealston and the noise levels that are going to interfere with their studies, interfere with the teachers being able to discipline their students and be able to keep a classroom under control. And we also haven't discussed about what will happen on the coaching fields, on the soccer fields and our outside time for our children. I think that will all be impacted by the noise and by those structures being where they are. Thank you.
Ms. Stein, is any others?
No, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to ask, when are we going to help our community...
Excuse me, sir.
...in terms of tax dollars?
Who is this?
Hi, this is Catherine Evans. I live down in Dogren and I just want, I, I feel so bad for the people that have to live anywhere near this site. anywhere near this site. I have tinnitus, and I can tell you, a constant drone can send you crazy. The constant, constant, constant drone. I couldn't even imagine living anywhere near that. Please, please reconsider this whole project for the sake of King George, the residents, the people that live there, the environment, the community. Tax dollars are great, but if your community is unhappy, they'll leave and there goes your tax base. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others, Mr. Stein?
No, Mr. Chairman.
We close public hearing on conditional rezoning application. And we will open public hearing on proffer amendment application case number Z 2023 00101. Mr. Stein, is anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll close public hearing on proffer amendment application case number Z 2023 00101. And we will open public comment on special exception permit, case number Z 2023 0100. Stein, is anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we will close public hearing on special exception permit, case number Z 2023 00100. Okay, discussion.
I have a comment. I couldn't frame it as a question, but I'm not sure who to direct it. And if Mr. Meyer wants to address it, I'd be happy to hear from him. Has anyone studied or considered the multiplier for this economic development? In other words, all we're really hearing is about tax revenue. What kind of economic development multiplier should we expect from a development like this?
Good evening, Mr. De Vries. That's a really good question. The best estimate that I could give you, and considering technology jobs, essentially for every tech job you create, you create approximately two jobs with it. So the multiplier effect is if we're looking at 30 to 40 jobs per data center, you know, essentially multiply that by two, so you're looking at about 60 jobs. So how does that happen? So when you create a tech worker that's making 100K and they come into your community, well, they consume things, they eat out, they go to the yoga studio, they go to the brewery. And with that density of tech workers comes in, additional revenue or additional commercial activity. So those are the things you consider when you bring in tech jobs like this, similar to what Dogren has. When you have a Dogren come into your community, the impact spreads out throughout the entire region, not just the county itself. Additionally, for this project, you look at the construction jobs. So the construction jobs that are created from this, if you look at the occupational breakdown, you're looking at steam fitters, electricians, laborers, ditch diggers, heavy equipment operators, you name it, it's going to be provided by this job, right, by this potential project. With the build out that we're looking at for 15 years, you could have someone learn to be a steam fitter in high school, graduate, work on this job site, five years later, start their own company and still work on this job site, right? That's the potential that you look at when you're looking at a multiplier effect for economic development project like this. Additionally, one more thing to note is, I think for each building, and this is just approximate numbers, you're looking at about 300 to 200 construction workers per building. So that gets amplified by itself and what it does to the economy and how it contributes overall to the tax base. So that's the short answer of that. Do not quote me on that. I would have to run an economic impact analysis to be able to provide that to the planning commission to be a little bit more accurate, but that's what we're looking at in its entirety.
That's great, I appreciate your effort. I thought that was an important point to cover for something like this.
Thank you, sir.
So if I could make just a couple of quick comments. I've heard the comments that the folks have made, the residents and the citizens of the county have made, and they're all very appropriate and, you know, they deserve to be seriously considered. I do think we, sitting on this commission, have tried to address most of those concerns. If we've had multiple conversations about noise, the only way we as a county have of monitoring noise from any activity, any industrial or non-industrial, is through the zoning ordinance. We revised that recently and it's in place, and this applicant has actually come in underneath that. Now, I know that enforcing that will be a challenge for the county, but I know they're trying to enforce it now. So, you know, that's going to be on the county administrator and the rest of the county employees to put in place processes for addressing, you know, complaints, monitoring it above and beyond what the applicant is planning on providing for us. And I have faith that they can do that. Enforcement is still going to be tough, and I acknowledge that. We've addressed the water. You know, there's already an inlet there. It was already used for the old power plant. I don't know, I don't have the details on exactly how it was treated going in or coming out, but, you know, my time working on the base, environmental quality keeps a real close eye on water. So, and I know even as an entity of the federal government, we got fined on multiple occasions, and we had to put things in place to correct that in order to meet, you know, dictates from the state and the federal government. So, I mean, I'm relatively comfortable that we've addressed the water issue, thanks. You know, I'm not, I'm not a scientist, I can't sit here and tell you exactly how it's done, but, you know, I've always been impressed with the DEQ people who really do stay on top of that kind of stuff. The county is changing, there's nothing we can do about that. I've lived here almost 40 years now, and I can personally attest to the way I've seen it change. It's growing and it seems to be growing at a faster rate every moment. You know, the new bridge over the Potomac has certainly feels like it has increased the traffic on Route 301, you know? Making it easier to come across that river every day is just going to, in all likelihood, in my opinion, going to increase the pressure on us to provide housing for folks who, like some of these folks, have been trying to escape Northern Virginia, you know? I think we've tried to address a number of those issues that the county has needs. We sit here every year, look at the comprehensive plan, and we know what is presented to us and what the county is able to finance. So there are important things that we should be doing as a county that we just don't have the tax base to do. So there are legitimate needs to address those kinds of issues. I will admit, the size of this project is pretty overwhelming, and we've talked about that among ourselves for the last several months. The project that was shared with us this evening is going to double that. So, I mean, you know, it's just, it is sort of mind boggling how large it is. But we've identified the industrial area in our existing, you know, comp plan, and we're, we do need, if we're going to let any part of this proposal go through, we do need to make some changes to the comprehensive plan. And I'm reasonable, I'm more than willing to do that to some degree. I realize it's going to upset some folks and I feel bad about that, but there's necessity to manage the growth of the county, but still allow it to grow. And to grow, we've got to grow the tax base as well. And we can't stop the growth, it's coming whether we want it or not. I do have a personal red line on Route 3. You know, south of Route 3 on the river, I'm still not willing to support, but making some adjustments to the Route 3 West settlement area, I could support north of Route 3.
I agree with Mr. Kendrick. Still feel like this is an enormous ask. I would have quite frankly liked to have seen some more data with regards to building placement, timelines, et cetera, but I do want to thank staff and council for providing some suggestions way forward, specific to alternatives. And that helped frame a lot for me personally, as far as being able to kind of, if you will, make this a more manageable, I think for me, more manageable effort. So wanted to say that again, echoing Mr. Kendrick's comments, but also thank you all for putting that in there as well, so. I just think it's a big, it's still a big ask, but at least we have some legal guidance moving forward, so thank you.
Mr. Chairman, will you entertain a motion?
Well, one, I wanted to make sure we're done with just kind of general comments, and I'd like to address these one at a time. And we will save the comprehensive plan amendment till the last. So if we have a motion on the conditional rezoning application case number Z 2023 00099.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion on that. And I think the purpose of the motion in part is to, one, somewhat modestly curtail the overall footprint that's been proposed originally for the data center complex in its entirety, as well as preserve something of the rural character of the county that we're also interested in doing. And that is, I'm going to direct you to motion 2B that you see in your packet. But before doing that, I'm going to add to this motion, in a sense, a bit of conditionality around noise monitoring, which I've written out, and I'd like to read into the record. And the purpose of that essentially is to assist with the enforcement of noise ordinance and protect against exceedances over the lifetime of the project. So, without further ado, subject to the applicant being required to install and maintain at its expense permanent noise monitoring stations in such quantities and locations as are mutually agreed between the applicant and King George County Administration, for the purpose of ensuring compliance with applicable King George County noise ordinance limits on a continuous 24-hour-per-day, 365-day-per-year basis for the lifetime of the applicant's projects, where the actual readout of all such noise monitoring stations is at all times accessible to King George County Administration on a real-time basis. I move that the Planning Commission forward the comprehensive plan amendments as proposed by the applicant to the King George County Board of Supervisors, with recommendation for partial approval, redefine the boundaries of the Route 3 West primary settlement area to expand a boundary line from Route 665 Birchwood Creek Road to Routes 3 Kings Highway and 603 Fletcher's Chapel Road, to include only parcels identified in conditional rezoning application case number Z-2023-00099, but excluding parcels not owned or controlled by the applicant or located south of Route 3. This recommendation does not include changing the planning area of limited areas south of Route 3 near the Rappahannock River, on either side of Dissington Lane, whether or not parcels are identified in conditional rezoning application case number Z-2023-00099, or any parcels presently outside of the Route 3 West primary settlement area except for tax parcel 21-25, tax parcel 23-35, and tax parcel 21-33. The boundaries of the Potomac River North Rural Development Area are recommended to be amended, consistent with the land to be excluded from that planning area and relocated to the Route 3 West primary settlement area. Amendments should be made to update Maps 6 and 12 to be consistent with the foregoing. This recommendation includes a finding that the general location, character, and extent of electrical substations and accessory equipment shown on the applicant's general development plan north of Route 3 is substantially in accordance with the comprehensive plan as hereby recommended for amendment. These recommendations and findings are based on the existing language of the comprehensive plan to limit industrial development to the triangle created by Routes 3, 665, and 605, and harmonious development in accordance with present and future needs of the affected settlement areas promoting low-intensity industrial development in appropriate areas not adjoining the Rappahannock River. There is a further finding that the public interest would not be served at the present time by including parcels not owned or controlled by the applicant within the triangle created by Routes 3, 665, and 605 because of the objection of one or more owners of the affected parcels, the expressed intention of one or more owners to continue agricultural uses, and because the majority of the parcels so excluded do not individually meet the minimum square footage for industrial uses stated in the zoning code of 10 acres.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Two, three, four.
Post.
We are tied.
I thought we were going to discuss. Nine, after we had discussed the rezoning. This amendment seems to be directed to recommendations.
We were just going to take.
Yeah, I really don't think that there's any compelling reason to right now do anything with the comprehensive plan other than.
Right, we're not, we haven't.
Either in this meeting or in the near future, that, but we can discuss that. I think we should discuss the rezoning applications and the exception to the special use permit application, those two cases, we should have a consensus on, because that will certainly drive which of the menu of options on amending the comp plan. And it's my position that amending the comp plan is something we will undertake to do at our schedule on our conveni- at our schedule on our conventions.
So for the comp plan, that, that's not a requirement, amending the comp plan?
So it is customary that your comp plan is a consideration in rezoning, so it would be fairly unusual to approve a rezoning inconsistent with your comp plan. Usually they, they go hand in hand. So there, there could be further discussion if you all wanted to consider the rezoning items further. And then if you reach an approved motion with regard to the rezoning, then you could conform your comp plan recommendation to whatever that outcome might be.
So my understanding, reading the information we were given, is that to, to recommend approval of a rezoning without recommending modifying the comp plan leaves us open to some arguments, makes it awkward, at, at least awkward, if not worse. So are you, were you not?
So, so if I may, your, so your comprehensive plan is your long-range planning tool, and your rezoning takes immediate effect. So it would be odd that your long-range planning does not match what your near-term or immediate rezoning actions may be.
So I know last month I was arguing against rezoning right now and waiting until we do our five-year update. But having read counsel's recommendation, I'm more inclined to rezone now as we just voted rather than not rezone or not changing, changing the settlement area now rather than waiting until the comprehensive plan update.
I see no reason why that is required. I can understand it may make it inconvenient for both the applicant and for Dominion, but that's our comp plan. That's ours. We have yet to discuss, much less think through, much less hold public hearings on, now what do we do knowing we have this behemoth in our yard? We have an elephant in the yard now. How does that affect our, our future planning? We haven't begun to think through that. Uh, do you want to conserve, I mean, there are, there are comp plan processes, which is why I joined the board, so I could help with the comp plan, that if we don't have to hurry them through, there is no legal reason for us to revise the comp plan at the time of rezoning. It's not a requirement. It leaves this body and the Board of Supervisors, uh, well, I want to say leverage that, you know, for the people we represent.
So changing the settlement area doesn't change the zoning. Changing the zoning is where this body has leverage.
I will say though, that we can't really lead industrial development into our industrial zone if we keep changing the comp plan to accommodate projects that come along. So business gets to pick and choose a site and then get it approved by us, then we don't get controlled growth.
Right.
So I, I think the comp plan, if it really is something that is, is the policy that, that is leading the growth, then, you know, we need to look at it along with the rest of the county and not just on a specific thing.
So I mean, I would counter that by arguing that, you know, in back in 2018, 2019, when we were going through the comp plan changes, we looked at, at this area and said, this is where the industrial growth should grow. I mean, that's, that's where it should happen. And we laid out, we blocked out some land based on property lines that we thought was reasonable at the time. I don't think anybody who sat through that process anticipated seeing the kind of proposals that we have before us tonight and the one that's probably coming before us in the next month or two, anything near that size. You know, to, to acknowledge that and modify the comp plan, to me, seems more than reasonable. And, you know, I'm not talking about making huge sweeping changes, but we'll come back in '24 and start working on a complete revision of the comp plan from, you know, front to back. So.
And I'll, I'll add too, we, we are, at the end of the day, an advisory body, right? So I believe that, I believe that the modified motion that Mr. Fox put up is the most reasonable motion to be able to pass and monitor this effort as it grows and then incrementally approve as things come about and as we see things mature with the project. And I think that's the, the advice that we should forward to the Board of Supervisors. And hopefully they will take our recommendation because otherwise it's very much up to them to pass this in its entirety if we don't advise something otherwise.
Well, this, this has the appearance of special interest. It has the appearance of benefiting a particular, in a particular case in a particular action, application. That, that appearance will be with us no matter what. We are changing not only zoning, but also our, our identity, our corporate, our, our, collective, uh, for a particular case, our conscience for a particular case. It really looks like the individual's concerns are paramount and trump the public benefit. Now, the, on vice of counsel, we're told to avoid that appearance. And as such, I recommend that we amend the comprehensive plan on our schedule according to our processes that, I mean, if that's an issue for the applicant, I would like to hear that. If it's a deal breaker, I'd like to hear that. But if, we recommend that we will amend the plan to reflect the rezoning in a few months.
Yeah, it's just procedural.
It's procedure.
So I think we've had the discussion on the comprehensive plan amendment, so I think we put that out. Is there a motion?
I thought we just voted on it.
We.
We did, it didn't, it didn't, so it's tied.
No, we, we voted on the conditional rezoning, not the comprehensive.
The motion Mr. Fox made was for the comprehensive plan amendment.
If I may, Mr. Chair, a tie vote is a failed vote, so if there is another motion from the floor, you could all entertain that.
What was that, sorry?
Tie vote's failed.
Ah. John?
Need to consider this. It's, oh, maybe changed. I'd like to know how recommendations developed by this body on two other bases. Such a new succession in the black parts included or excluded from the comp plan.
So do we reintroduce the motion or do we call for another vote?
So if there is another motion to be entertained, you, you could, you could consider it. Or if you're deadlocked on this issue, then the recommendation to the board on that particular subject matter is a recommendation of denial by virtue of a tied vote.
We can't vote on it again.
That's what I said, if there be a modification to the motion.
I have no interest in that.
So it would be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors as recommended denial?
That's correct.
If you make the motion to, for that and we vote on it again.
If.
Yes.
Motion is changed.
Otherwise, it goes up, I, I don't know how.
What changes, what changes do you want to make in the motion? I think that's, that.
If we change the motion, you say?
We can revote.
We can't, we cannot vote on that again, though. That is correct.
So you, another motion could be on the floor. There was, I believe, as the chairman noted, Mr. Fox's motion was intended to cover the rezoning, but the actual language he used was with regard to the comp plan. So I, I think that if there was interest in entertaining another motion on the comp plan, if you wanted to start there, or if you wanted to go with your initial thought to consider the, the rezoning item before the comp plan, either, either is an appropriate course of action.
I can say that I, I could envision incorporating these changes in our comp plan review at the time we do it. I mean, there's nothing in here I find objectionable other than our recommendation to the Board of Supervisors is that this matter be considered as part of normal planning commission business in the revision, 2024 revision of the comp plan. I, I see a tying in. We're giving up a significant part of our farmland inventory, some of the most beautiful farmland in Virginia. Can we get some conservation dollars? Can we get some preservation dollars?
So if, if there's going to be a, a different motion made, then we would vote on the mo, that motion? If there's not going to be an additional motion, then this gets forward to the Board of Supervisors recommending disapproval.
I think the difficult thing here is that the two pieces go together. And so it's, you know, if you say comprehensive plan change, then you're pretty much saying this too. Have we had all of our discussions that we need to have about the zoning yet? So, you know, I feel like all the discussions need to come out. We need to figure out where we're at. And these are, you know, these are different degrees of, of, of what we would like to do, possibly do. And so we need to figure out where we can meet so that we can vote.
Would it be acceptable if I made a motion to reconsider following discussion of case 101 and 100? Because there are parcels in here that are affected by the, i- i- if we approve the rezoning, say, 99, that includes some parcels that some of us consider sensitive.
And that would be a new motion.
Restricted use.
If I may, I'm sorry, Mr. Decorda, how did you vote on the prior motion? You voted nay. So you, you were vote, you would be in favor of reconsidering your vote? Okay.
So do we need a new motion for that or can't?
Yes, so Mr. Decorda sounds inclined to have a motion to reconsider, but I believe he wants to amend the, the motion that was on the floor in some way.
Which would make it a new motion.
Correct.
So. Is your mic on?
Now, we go ahead and proceed to discuss the rezoning and special use exemption applications from the applicant.
All right, so we're going to have individual discussions based on the cases. Is that, is that where you headed? And then vote after each one? Or are we looking to have a motion in totality?
I, I'm not prepared to make a motion at this time.
I, I think what, what Mr. Moss is asking, do, do you want to go through each individual motion and vote on it and then do the comp plan last?
Because that's what I thought we were doing.
For examples, on case 99, parcel 48, there are parcels south. Right, and, and the original motion, it excluded everything south of Route 3.
The original motion.
You can turn your mic.
The original motion refers to the comp plan, not a rezoning obligation.
It was, it was hitting?
Yes.
All right.
That the original motion referred only to the comp plan revision. It did have restrictive language in there, which if we both approve that and approve 99 as written, would be inconsistent. There are.
So we'll take them, we're going to take them one at a time. Conditional rezoning application, you want to hold off on that one and?
No, no, we can, we can go through these in order and do the comp plan last.
Let's, how about, I move that we hold an abeyance, the discussion and a revote on the comprehensive plan amendments until after we have discussed case number Z two zero two three dash zero 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 nine nine and case number Z two zero two three dash zero zero one zero one.
A second, that was my original intent.
And as well as special exemption permit case number Z two zero two three dash zero zero one zero zero.
Seconded.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Move this on.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, so we're speaking to conditional rezoning application case number Z two zero two three zero 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 nine nine, discussion.
Are all these properties located north of Route 3?
No.
No.
Tax map, tax map, 21 parcel 43 is what was originally referred to as Area 1, which is the old Maury property, south of, of Route 3, joining the river.
So I just have some general comments, not particularly to each parcel. First off is that we have over 600 acres of industrial zone property, and we're asking to expand it. So I think we need to have some rationale for why we would do that. I mean, if it's there and it's usable, why are we rezoning more land? You know, this comes down to our, whether we like this project or not, the big picture is we need to decide the use of the land that needs to make sense. And then the timing of the request is concerning because I'm not really sure if this project is bound to the current zoning ordinances or the ones that are going to be, that are drafted and will be coming into effect later in the year.
Bound by current.
So the current data center ordinances right now say that you shouldn't be able to see a building from the street or any other land use. So if the ordinances that are currently there, the four or five sentences are not going to be into effect, and the new ones aren't going to be into effect, then what's really going to be protecting us from the rezoning, the possible rezoning of this land?
Well, I'll clarify, so it'll be, the applicant would be subject to the current zoning ordinances, and when the ordinances change, they'll be accountable to those. zoning ordinances. And when the ordinances change, they'll be accountable to those.
Okay, that wasn't clear to me. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair, so the, the proposed application was submitted under the current ordinance. So the, the use that they're proposing would be subject to the current ordinance. Now, depending on submittal dates and approval dates for site plans, different parts of the new zoning ordinance may or may not be applicable. So unfortunately, I can't give you a, a clear, you know, yes or no answer. The, the uses as specified in this application, if proved, then they, to the extent that they might be contradictory with the new ordinance, then they would be carried forward. But certain of the development criteria, if it's not contradicted by what is included in their application as binding on the applicant and within the proffers, then there are certain things, depending on the timing of their site plan submittal and approval, that might come in effect under the new zoning ordinance. So it's a little bit of a case by case basis.
So initially, it's current ordinance and depending on when they submit for their, their progressive future, those future endeavors will be covered by whatever the ordinances are at that time.
Right. So what their use is proposed, their data center use, if, if this is approved in whole or part, those would be carried forward regardless of, of what the new ordinance proposes. Now, different criteria that apply to the site plan may or may not apply depending on if and when what is proposed and the zord, the new proposed zoning ordinance comes into effect.
Clear as mud?
Clear as mud. So what that says to me is that there's a possibility that in the first stages of development, all the draft ordinances for battery storage and data centers may, may not be the criteria that they use. It's my understanding and part of the staff report, they said that we have about 600 acres of unused industrial land. Am I, I'd have to look. You guys help me out. I'm pretty sure I read through all the paperwork and it said that there were about 600 acres of industrial land.
Make sure you're speaking to your microphone. Couldn't quite understand.
Mr. Minor, perhaps you could speak to the inventory of industrial use zones and tenancy.
Yeah, sure. So I'm not aware of 600 acres located in the county that's usable to be developed on in the county. If you include the mine sites, you may be able to get to 600 acres, but that's not usable for current development. So where I'm familiar, there's industrial property. There is some small parcels off of three and 301 intersection. You're looking at like the Walker Sand and Stone area over there. There's a few gravel pits off of not Port Conway, but Cleve Road. And then there are a few parcels right here in your, on the slide here that are zoned industrial. There's 60 acres on the backside of Farley Vale, but that would take a lot of infrastructure in order to develop. There's, I believe, 60 acres right there off the Taylor property. And then the industrial park is all spoken for. It is currently under option by Greenship. We have 10 acres, parcels four and five off of Bloomsbury Road. That's available, but it's not very developable. So currently the county is out of industrial space for economic development. So, thank you.
Of total industrial, I don't know if this is developed or not, but for total industrial, I have an acreage of around 1,500 square feet. That's about 1.3% of the county. Or acres, excuse me, not square feet. Good catch. About 1,500 acres.
I note there are two lots in other discussions and in consistency with Mr. Fox's amendment motion. Map 21 parcel 43 and map 21 parcel 47 are, in fact, south of Route 3. And I don't know if they need to be considered together or not, but we need to reconcile the motion with the presence of these two parcels in this conditional request.
But 2143 is the only one south of Route 3. 2147 is one of.
2147 is one of the red properties. It's the smaller lot that's undeveloped. It's under 10 acres.
Yeah. So actually, 2147 is in two parts. It is kind of split, but part of it is below Route 3 and part of it is above. It actually abuts the existing Birchwood property. The rezoning application was only for the portion of that property that is above Route 3.
Can you put your pointer on it?
Yes. So is that not showing up? So that is 2147, and then this is the other part of it. Only this part is part of the rezoning application.
It appears. There is the footprint of the Dissington Lane property and the, I mean, the Maury property, the 2148 and 2147, 2143 and 2147. So it could be cartographically impaired.
That part in the hash is just the, is the Maury property 2143. 2147, or that portion of 2147, that's below Route 3 is here. But again, that's not part of the application for the rezoning.
I don't know that that's made real crystal clear in this statement, but we need to modify that. Can you take a parcel that's really two pieces separated and call them the same thing?
It, it is more common than you would think. It does happen quite a bit with the.
All right.
How historic.
What we're discussing as part of this proposal is tax map 20, tax map 21 parcel 47, the area north of Route 3.
Yes, the modified.
We make our motion, it's important that we state it that way because I don't want the part south of it approved.
Yes, the modified motions do say part of tax map 2147, and that is the part north that was indicated in their application.
All right. So if I understand this, Gary, is if we forward this case recommending approval, providing we, tax map parcel 2143 is excluded, that would make the two C motion coherent with the rezoning application.
Is that great, Mr. Moss?
So I'll ask another procedural question, Phil. So the way, the way this is brought to us as one case number, can we modify this so that we can recommend disapproval for one parcel, but approval for the others?
Yes. And the second recommendation does, well, it doesn't recommend disapproval for the others, but it recommends approval for just the parcels north of Route 3.
Okay.
And.
If I could also clarify, Mr. Chair, so proffers are voluntary. Currently, you have a global proffer statement for all of those parcels, so that this, this body could make a recommendation, but then the applicant would either conform or not their proffers to submit to the Board of Supervisors. If, if I may, Mr. Chair, just in case it helps frame the discussion. So Mr. Fox's motion involved all of the parcels except for the Maury parcel, 2143, south of Route 3. So if there was a willingness to consider another motion as to another group of those parcels, you could. Or if you are deadlocked on the issue of the comprehensive amendment change and the rezoning as to the, the parcels that are together in the conditional rezoning, you may want to go ahead and, and move on to the special exception amendment and the proffer amendment as to the power plant, former power plant site and the sites that support that site.
Right. So we're, we're talking about case 00099, but in terms of motions that we're selecting, we're talking about the, yeah, comp plan amendment. So we need to turn the pages till we get to six of nine, because that points us to the 00099.
So furthering our discussion, I, I'd just like to say that I don't think it's typical rezoning to make a donut around certain parcels. And that I have a lot of compassion for the people that are now going to be in the middle of an industrial park, whether it was a data center or something else. It's just, to me, not good form and not what you would predictably do to control growth.
So relative to the case we're, we're discussing, page six of nine seems to cover what we've discussed and what I think most are agreeable to, and provides latitude for additional points.
That also includes areas south. This is the one that Maury parcel means. That's the other recommendation. This is the case, recommendation one, recommendation two, recommendation three. And you're looking at two. This is the one that does not, this, only there's north. This one says it too.
Okay. There are a lot of pieces of property. And trying to keep this all straight with the motions, it's, it's taken a few minutes to, to get this figured out. So please bear with us.
Well, I mean, if you're comfortable with, with the verbiage, if you'd like to adjust it.
If you're comfortable.
Would you like to remove the parcels?
Sure. Yeah. I mean, if, if that's what we want to.
Can't hear the conversation.
So the.
Talking about a test. Get the motion out on page seven.
So that's, yeah, that's where we're looking. We're looking page six, page seven.
I'm not going to vote for that if the other one's failed.
Sue.
I mean, we can put it out. I'm just saying it's.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It could be modified. So that was their, that was their attempt here. And that's where I'm, I'm thinking that we, we kind of have the best that, that we could get in terms of assistance. And now, you know, it's kind of on us to take as is or take what it is and modify it to what we're feeling. That's why I say it's going to take a little time to figure that out. Yep.
Can I just ask, are we pretty much on the same page that we're not really for anything below Route 3? We can start ticking away at this.
I think so.
Yeah, in general, I think that's.
Okay. Let, let's just take it one step at a time.
We'll see it earlier about, was keeping it in mind, but they come, I don't know, comprehensive plan.
Can I ask Ms. Lackey a question real quick? Ms. Lackey, you said we lose global proffers if they don't get each and every motion, motion in favor, correct? In other words, if we choose one of these modified motions, global proffers are gone. Is that correct?
So if you all were to recommend something less than the whole rezoning that's proposed by the applicant, that would move forward as a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, but the applicant would have the option to pursue their original proposal, or they could conform their, their proffers and their application to your recommendation. That would be at the election of the applicant. So this body can't direct the applicant that they must change their proffers to only apply to those parcels. That would have to be the decision of the applicant.
So gentlemen, we are making a recommendation. It's, it's our recommendation. And I say, if we want to modify it, then make the, make a recommendation with the modification. The outcome is going to be on the Board of Supervisors. Right?
If, if I may, another, I don't, I don't want to steer you all in one direction, but some of what I'm hearing, I'm hearing some resistance to updating the comp plan, but that is something that is very much in the, in the purview of the, of the planning commission. So if you all had a recommendation on the comp plan, that would stand separate from any recommendation on the rezoning. So for example, you could recommend a comp plan amendment change that is inconsistent with the application, and yet still recommend a denial on the application if you chose to do so, to advance the application to the Board of Supervisors, but that is within the purview of this body.
Do I understand you to say that forward with a disapproval on the conditional rezoning case? Or forwarding saying without reason, saying we believe that south of Route 3 is to be disapproved because of inclusion of Route 3, then, well, the board can naturally overrule us. And then in the Comp Plan, draw the boundaries to reflect the judgment that south of Route 3 should not be industrial.
Correct. You could make a comprehensive plan recommendation. That's your roadmap of where you want to see industrial development. So if that is different from what the applicant's application is, that is certainly a recommendation that this body could make.
All right, I'm going to go back to a fundamental question. Are we ready to vote on this? I mean, are we? Because.
Which version?
Yeah, pick a page. Which page are we asking if we're.
I'm just saying, I mean, with the failure of the first one.
So last, last meeting, I made a comment to the applicant, all or nothing. Right? He has submitted a request that drives that point home by including parcel one, south of Route 3, in there as a single request.
But it shouldn't matter. We make our recommendations based on what we.
No, what we've got before us is an application. So we can do two things. Well, three things. We can prove it in hold. We can deny it in hold. In which case, well, if we approve it in hold, then the proffer's thin. Okay, if we deny it, that's just a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Both of them are. Or we can recommend that we approve it, we partially approve it, but disapprove that one parcel south of 301. Those are the three options to us.
And I think the third option is a consensual choice.
Say it again.
I think the third option, which you just stated, is the one that I think is majority of how we feel.
So that goes forward to the board. If I'm saying something wrong, somebody over there, please correct me. That goes to the board as our recommendation. It would be up to the applicant, knowing what our recommendation is, to approach the Board of Supervisors and either stick to his guns that he wants it all or nothing, or he modifies his proffers to match what we've approved. So remember, we're only making a recommendation. So if we are in agreement that we're willing to, you know, recommend approval of all these zoning requests except for that one parcel south of Route 3, then that's what we do. And it'll, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to kick this can down. I'm not trying to kick this can down the road to the Board of Supervisors, but in reality, that is the way it works. If they don't like that, they can come back and say, we approved the whole thing. But we've told them what we think. And I have shared with you tonight my opinion, but I'm one of eight tonight. So. Are we ready to vote on that? I mean, do we need any more discussion on that? I don't think so.
I have one question for the applicant. I believe we discussed this parcel earlier, and you said on the river, boundaries should be a 500-foot setback. Is that correct? And I also recall you saying there were some additional considerations of the sensitivity of the site regarding use, the specifics of which are, excuse me.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So yeah, the proffered development parameters are that we will set back any building 500 feet from the river. We're obviously dedicating eight acres for recreational use to the river. We noted tonight that we will work with the community in having access to the river. We're 300 feet setback from Route 3. That site is estimated to include about a 1.25 million square foot, well, 1.25 million square feet of facilities, multiple facilities on the site. It is an important part of the project. And I heard tonight the three options. It's the discretion of this commission to either, as noted earlier, to vote the project up, vote the project down, or to modify it. I heard Mr. Fox's motion, I will tell you, 24/7, 365-day monitoring. It's not going to work for us. It wouldn't work for any industrial user. You have to apply that rule to every industrial user, maybe in your county and perhaps any future ones. You're not going to get a whole lot of them. I can promise you that. Either you abide by the ordinance in which you proffered, or you don't. It's that simple. You guys have been wonderful. I appreciate your patience with us. We're trying to invest a lot of money in this county, and we look forward to doing so and partnering with you. I think we deserve a vote. Thank you.
All right, I hate to.
Sorry, ma'am.
I mean, is there a possibility that we don't change the Comp Plan and we rezone all of the parcels that are already in it?
Yes. I don't think it's a good practice. It's not. I get it, and it's within our purview to change it as we see fit. And I think, I think the first vote, or the first motion, rather, would have set the stage for what I believe we've all talked through. But it didn't pass. So now we're stuck with something that's a little awkward. And we got an audience. How are we getting past this, guys?
I would just say, I'm for the most conservative approach because, you know, the scope of it and the timing of it, I would say, as small as we can make it now that we can all agree on is what I would vote for.
Well, I think Mr. Kendrick said it. He gave us the three options, and I think the third option that he mentioned was the one that we all had consensus on. We just need to make the motion.
Yep, so we're ready for a motion.
Ms. Kendrick?
Mr. Flatley, I'm suggesting that maybe we all go through the GDP page nine and vote, or talk about each individual parcel which should be included in a motion and which should not be included in a motion.
I don't know that that would be productive because I don't know how other people feel about it. But for me, I feel like putting the industrial zoning on both sides of the residential use there before we have our ordinances in place is a little risky. I think I said last month that if I had, in a perfect world, I would just extend their lot along the railroad to Fletcher's Chapel. That's where they want to put the two data centers. And you know, that's still, what, five, I think 5 million square feet? Data center? But like I said, I'm not sure everyone would agree to that.
I think we're ready for a motion myself.
If you're ready for a motion.
I'm ready for a motion. I'm going number two on page seven. I move to forward the conditional rezoning application case number Z-2023-00099 to the King George County Board of Supervisors with the recommendation for partial approval to rezone with proffers part of tax map, part of tax map 21, parcel 47, tax map 21, parcel 48, tax map 21, parcel 48D, and part of tax map 21, parcel 50, from limited agricultural A1 to industrial. This recommendation for approval shall also include the request to rezone with proffers, tax map 21, parcel 25, tax map 21, parcel 33, tax map 21, parcel 35, and tax map 21, parcel 44, from rural agricultural A2 to industrial. This recommendation does not include any parcel south of Route 3, Kings High Way, including tax map parcel 21, parcel 43, and the portion of tax map 21, parcel 47, that is south of Route 3. Recommendation to approve rezoning tax map 21, parcel 48D to industrial is conditioned upon such parcel being combined with one or more industrial parcels by boundary line adjustment plat or a re-subdivision of properties on a duly approved and recorded plat to meet a minimum lot size of 10 acres as required by King George zoning ordinance section 2.12.6A. This recommendation is based on land use considerations including the existing language in the Comp Plan to limit industrial development to the triangle created by Routes 3, 665, and 605, and harmonious development in accordance with the present and future needs of the affected settlement areas, promoting low intensity industrial development in appropriate areas not adjoining the Rappahannock River that provides desirable employment and enlarge the tax base.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Opposed? Passes.
We got two more.
Okay. Now, proffer amendment application case number Z-2023-00101. Discussion?
This is the amendment to approve the original proffer, withdrawal of the original proffers, correct?
Correct.
I don't think it's in anybody's best interest to require that proffer remain that this property only be used for power production.
Ready for motion? I move to recommend approval of proffer amendment application case number Z-2023-00101, request by applicant to amend the proffers associated with rezoning 9103Z01 for limited industrial uses, including tax map 21, parcel 50, located at 10900 Virchwood Drive, total area of approximately 317 acres included in this request. Property is located on the Route 3 West Settlement area for the King George County Comprehensive Plan.
Second motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can't do it. It doesn't, it's not keeping.
Motion carries. Okay, next case. Discussion?
Water intake.
I think the case for recommending approval has been made. It's an integral part of the project, and I don't see any controversy with it.
I agree.
Motion?
Move it forward, special exception permit case number Z-2023-00100 to the King George County Board of Supervisors with a recommendation for approval to amend the previously issued special exception permit number 91-03-Z01 to terminate the use of tax map 21, parcel 50 as a power production facility and manufactured aggregate facility, as well as to retain the use of an easement located on tax map 29, parcel 4 for surface water intake facility in its current location on the lower Rappahannock River. This includes the water supply facilities associated with the intake and Dominion Substation, Switch Yard, and related electrical utility facilities. This recommendation is based on a special exception existing to limit use of the property to a coal-fired power plant and accessory uses. Such power plant has been demolished except for some supporting infrastructure compatible with redevelopment, and the proposed redevelopment plan of the property is used consistent with priorities of the comprehensive plan.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We're done. Next order of business.
Full business. There's none. New business.
If I may, Mr. Chair, so you all had a tied or failed vote on the Comp Plan amendment, so I don't know if there was interest in revisiting that in light of the vote on the rezoning action?
Mr. Kendrick put us in abeyance on that. Is it required that he make the motion to remove?
I said abeyance until we had discussed the others. We've now discussed those. So I think we should come back and address it.
Okay. But we don't have to have a motion.
If we do, I so move.
Do we need a motion? Do we need a motion for Mr. Kendrick to revisit it?
You could have a motion to lay it back on the table.
I'm asking because we had a motion to put it in abeyance. So it just seems.
I understood the motion to be to keep it in abeyance till the other matters were decided.
Just for the record, I kind of agree with Mr. Decord. I would rather through regular order revisit the Comp Plan next year on schedule.
I'm still of the opinion that it's good practice to tie the development areas in our comprehensive plan with our actions about approval of rezonings. It relieves some pressure on the county and the Board of Supervisors. It makes clear what our intent is. We, as I said earlier, we designated that general area for an industrial use back in 2019, not in our wildest imagination at that time, thinking we would have an interest so large as the one that's before us tonight. So I think reestablishing the boundaries of that district is just simply recognizing that fact.
I think we should proceed with regular order. It is my view that we proceed as the Planning Commission, doing the Planning Commission's work to make changes to the comprehensive plan as circumstance and the will of the county becomes known to us. As, I'm shocked by the hydrogen, another couple of million acres. I mean, this is. I mean, this, this is something we have to think through very carefully.
That one is already in
Right.
the settlement area, so that's going to come before us as simply a rezoning.
Quite so.
Pardon?
Quite so. But, I mean, that, I mean, that, that whole gateway area as referred to, I mean, it's going to change forever, and it's not going to unchange. It's.
I can only tell you that we had these discussions back in two thousand and nineteen, and even given all that, we selected this area because we had already started development of industrial.
It's about the county as a whole, Gary, it's about the whole county. If we're losing this much farmland, if we're losing this much river access, if we're losing this much resource, how do we compensate for it? What, you know, do we go make some more farmland? Do we, what kind of commitments can we anticipate from?
So the next time we have, we have a, I won't go there because we've actually used that excuse to turn down development, housing developments, because it was outside of the settlement areas. So again, I, yeah, we can, we can hold off until twenty four and change the boundaries again, but.
Right, at the same time, we change other boundaries that reflect the new reality of a sixteen million square feet of data center. I mean, we're going to be Oregon overnight.
I, you know, I'm, I mean, I've sort of expressed my opinion, but in reality, if the board of supervisors takes our recommendations that we just agreed to submit to them, or if they take those recommendations with the exception of the partial approval of this, of this rezoning, and they decide to rezone it all, then it'll just mean that it's a, an approved project outside of the settlement area.
Right.
So I, you know, I'm not going to beat a dead horse here.
I get it, but I think, I think you're confusing with changes to the comp plan versus changes to the actual zoning.
Right.
And, and the.
No, I'm quite, I'm quite sure.
The teeth is in the zoning, right? So you just voted to rezone. That's where, that's where the impact is.
This application, this project is a single entity operating within the comp plan framework. Now, we communicate to the board of supervisors, that we will do the analysis, and as, we will include these rezoning changes into the revised comp plan. But, you know, A affects B, affects C, we're going to look at our whole inventory of, of both industrial and agricultural, and all those processes have to reflect this new reality, and it has to be done systematically and in coordination. If it's not necessary for, for the project to go forward, then it's, it's our, our product on our schedule.
I, I also think it makes our job a lot harder if we let, you know, these situations affect the comp plan. And it, it makes the comp plan less powerful, it makes it lame. I mean, it, it basically says that, you know, it, it, it can be altered, and if it can be altered once, you know, it, then it's not really a plan. Like I said, it's disorganized growth. So I, I agree that we should not change the comp plan.
I was, I was here in twenty nineteen, I remember very well. You, you were here in twenty nineteen, you remember the comp plan.
Absolutely.
We, it's a guidance document, and a lot of those boundaries were, I wanted to, I remember I wanted to expand a lot of those boundaries, but the pullback was based upon feasible access to utilities, things like that. Well, we just found out that the applicant thinks it's feasible as is. So I think it's worth expanding. But again, I don't think we should be, I don't think we need to do it in conjunction with these rezonings. I think it can wait until next year. I mean, it is just a guidance document.
And it's going to change.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just want to clarify one point. Your sample motions have an action item on the comprehensive plan and also an action on the twenty two thirty two review, which is consistency of public facilities with the comp plan. So specifically, this applicant has asked that the electrical facilities, the substations and associated facilities, that this body render a decision on whether or not they are consistent with the comprehensive plan. So that, that's embedded in those, the sample motions on the comp plan amendment. I don't know if you all want to consider that separately or not, or if you're comfortable with the motion that was made and was a failed vote on the recommendation on a comp plan amendment and the twenty two thirty two review.
Right, and that's, that's the other thing I want to bring up for clarification. We did have a motion seconded, and it was a tie, and that would be forwarded to the board of supervisors as denial. So that's where we stand right now. We entertaining another motion?
Do, do we need a separate motion for the twenty two thirty two?
Or we can just vote to move forward as it is, with the, with the, with the denial.
You can leave it.
We can just, we don't have to vote on that.
Actually, I was going to say, you don't have to vote on it.
We can just decide to do that.
That's right. Okay, I'm taking the silence as we're good. New business. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I promise this one will be brief and hopefully have a little less discussion. So case number twenty three oh seven zero three, this is a proposed amendment to the King George County zoning ordinance to allow training facilities in the limited agricultural district A one as a use permitted only by special exception. This would be amendments to section one point nine and two point three point three. So a training facility as defined would be an establishment which primarily provides safety, security, or survivability training for the purpose of educating students to obtain or maintain a public safety, private security, or high-threat civil or foreign service vocation. This definition shall be construed as being inclusive of all buildings, structures, grounds, and uses that are associated with the organization and the training facility, including but not limiting to administrative buildings, cafeterias, classrooms, dormitories, staff housing, storage buildings, and accessory uses such as driving tracks, handgun ranges, and other similarly used structures. So what we're looking for here is to schedule a public hearing. So it is the recommendation from the Department of Community Development staff to the King George County Planning Commission to schedule a public hearing for case number twenty three oh seven zero seven, amendment to the, sorry, zero three, amendment to the King George County zoning ordinance to allow training facilities in the limited agricultural district A one as a use permitted only by special exception. Happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Why, why training facility? That's a bit ambiguous for what it sounds like this actually is.
Sure, so the board of supervisors asked staff to expand the current private school definition in consultation with the county's legal team and looking at other similar structures and similar uses in surrounding counties. It was recommended that we should have a separate definition to cover this. They would be more tailored to the specific, specific use.
The point of my question was, it's really not tailored. It's still a little fuzzy and ambiguous. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking about the, the old golf course and the, and the, and the, the application for that. I think it should be a little bit more.
Detailed.
Yeah, martial training, something like along those lines. It was, did you see that?
Yes, sir.
I totally agree with what you're saying. I'm curious to know also, these vehicle tracks, does this potentially involve trucks and tractor trailers that make a constant?
So everything, everything under these accessory uses would, this would be a special exception. So this would be brought to you at that time, and it would be on the applicant to portray those to you.
Right, so, so for here, all, all we're doing is.
Do we want a public hearing?
That's it, and all the conversation.
But as, as far as the public hearing that's going to be announced in the paper, I would like it to say, rather than training facility, something along the lines of martial training. Is there any?
Is that the consensus?
Is there any more discussion on that? Martial training versus training facility?
I, I just want to say, I, I like this project, and I like the new definition. I think, you know, it sums up what, what, what it's going to be. And, you know, you got the email about the project. It, it's going to be, you know, high-speed driving, gun range, all that stuff. So I, I really like the idea of the project, but to change our ordinance for this particular situation, again, right where we were earlier today, talking about, do we change an ordinance?
Changing the ordinance.
What the quest is, isn't it?
No, I'm just listening for a definition. They're, they're proposing, we have a public hearing to add a definition of training facility. I'm saying that's too ambiguous. I would like the definition to be martial training.
It's my understanding, it's not just to, to add the definition, but also to add the use to.
This definition.
That correct? They are expanding the definition.
By special exception.
This is not a permitted use in the ordinance now. This would be, this proposed text amendment would include this use with the definition. Of course, the definition can be changed if there is a consensus among the commission. You can also bring this back up at the public hearing as well.
I'm just saying, training facility, martial training. Is, is there any consensus on that?
Okay, I'm sorry, can, can we look at the definition again?
I don't know the definition of martial.
Sure. It's in your packets, I'm not sure which page it is. I actually handed mine to Mr. Dakota. Go down to.
What? It sounds a lot like, it sounds a lot like, like the gun range that we dealt with a few years ago. It's, it's what, it's what it sounds like, where you came in on the one premises and trying to disguise it as something else.
I think they're very upfront about what they want to do. I will say that.
Who's going to utilize?
I'm sure, I agree they are, I'm just saying the definitions of word, the term, is not.
Just to clarify, too, the gun range would have to be an accessory use. It couldn't be in its entirety.
Is there, is this a credential awarding facility? Is this under some, you know, accredited organization resulting in a degree or a certificate?
And, and what you have before you, this is just a general use. It's, it's not that detail specific.
So I think the point is, is we're not getting to approve this special exemption for this project at this point. All we're being asked to do is to approve the.
Public hearing.
Public hearing on the definition.
The definition.
And the possibility of adding it to our A one.
That's, it's already, it's already a special, special exception. It's just public hearing for the definition.
It's not, it's not a special exception now. It's, it's a new.
It's currently not permitted in the ordinance. What is being requested is to schedule a public hearing for the proposed text amendment to include this for special exception in the A one zoning district.
Make a motion, we schedule a public hearing for this?
Have a motion or second? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Directors report.
Well, I didn't get to address it last month, but I have been appointed interim director and zoning administrator after Heather has left after eighteen years.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
And although she's not here, I would, I think I speak for all of us when I thank her for her years of service, and I'd also like to thank her as serving as a very important mentor to me personally. Going on with the board report, the, we are scheduling a joint work session for the zoning and subdivision ordinance overhaul on August twenty ninth. I sent you all an email if you have any outstanding comments that you would like to share with the Berkeley Group. I need those by midnight Sunday, the thirteenth. And if you have any comments, it would really help the Berkeley Group focus the discussion at that meeting and look for consensus among not just the planning commission, but also the board. The variance application that was brought to you a few months ago is, they did not hold the public hearing, the applicant requested to, to hold on to it. But the public hearing has been rescheduled for the twenty second of this month. And of course, the planning commission is welcome to attend that hearing. That's for the telecommunication facility on St. Paul's Road. And that is all I have.
Other business? Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, it's properly seconded, all in favor? Motion carries.